Tuesday, September the twentieth. And we'd like to start our council meeting. And Sunny will be with us, but I'll do a pick a call order. Mayor Ikurs, Councilor Bergner.
Here.
Richards.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
And is Carl on the line? Okay. He may use a separate Zoom invitation from our five thirty meeting on Seda, so he may call in, so. Next item is the agenda. And I would like to move up. Item L two, personnel community center and point number two is the resolution. No, that's not it. I'm sorry, second. It's under planning and zoning. Item number three. Request for rezoning from R one to B two and conditional use permit for annual boarding at eight thirty second Avenue Southeast. In Orinoco, so I'd like to. Request to move that up to before the departments and committee reports. And after our public hearing on delinquent water bills. That's J point number two.
I move to set the agenda as amended.
My second then.
Okay. All right, any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, seeing if everybody's saying aye.
Aye.
That's approved. Next is our public forum. The three minute time limit for the council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to data privacy rules. No employees' names may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. To address the city council during public forum, please step up to the podium, state your name and address, and fill out the form provided, and speakers will be recognized only once. If you have anybody that would like to speak this time, please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Jan Bronson, Helen property of twenty five Minnesota Avenue. Merry Christmas to the board and everybody in the room, and happy new year. I have to believe sometimes you kind of miss me once in a while around here because I got to come back. My road wasn't plowed. Ten years, I've been going on this for ten years. I was promised the last time this would never happen again. It snowed Wednesday, no plowing, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I'm driving over the piles, you thought my property, I made the phone call. To people. And I'm not understanding why. I pay my taxes on time. I try to be a very good, I try to help you guys for Gold Rush, I try to be a good person here. And it seems like I'm not blaming the council. But I have to come before the council because you hired the contractor that doesn't snowplow. It's become now, it's almost like I believe it is, it is done on purpose. As I drive through, as I drive through Orinoco, all the roads are plowed. Mine's not plowed. I don't, I just don't, I don't understand it. The sewers coming up there in March, they cut a whole bunch of trees down, the easement that they're going to put it in, the brush still lays there. Now, the city council's part, but whoever your contractor is, if you cut it down, be able to do that, they should have come back. All summer, I've looked at all that brush pile as I drive in, lay there. So I guess my question is, who's watching? Who's overseeing all this, what these people are doing? In fact, I even reported that one day that I watched the. Called one council member and said, you know what, I just saw the big. U truck. Driving down the city road, he's overweight, he's breaking up the roads. I don't know, when he goes over some of your bridges, he's got to be overweight. The big rock truck that the guy that's doing the sewer plant, he's driving down your city streets with it. It costs all of us money when people do stuff like this. And so I, I recorded, I said, you know what, what's the big rock truck doing on them? And I was told, he was told not to do that, well. Will be that one. But. Again, I, I don't know what else I have to do. I shouldn't have to make the calls, ten year, I've done this every year for ten years. I had my road not plowed for two weeks, and I paid for it all, that was a huge mistake. I paid for that out of my own pocket. And the city went back to plowing it. So. Merry Christmas, everybody, and like I said, I, I'm. And I sure hope that you don't pay the person overtime to come up and pay. When you come up on Saturday after, late Saturday afternoon, after the Vikings game, because that was more important than my road. That no one could get a hold of anybody, and then after the Viking game is done, so I hope the city isn't paying him overtime to come and do a job. That he should have done.
It was plowed.
What's that?
It was plowed.
It was plowed, I take, uh, late Saturday afternoon, I left at four o'clock, it's still on.
You know who plowed it? Was it the city or?
All I can tell you is, I would have to believe it's your. I think, what was it, because I could see the dual tires. So I could see that it was a dump, it went one path, and then I see when I come back. The day, I think, I can't mention the name, but one of your city employees in the past has brought the truck up there, and it was widened up. A little bit more, because he just made one pass through there. On Saturday and Sunday and whatever, and then come back, and it's plowed to the width, it should be now. But. I know that all you people would be very unhappy at four days, but now it's all packed down, and it's all ice for me. And the sun doesn't shine up there very much, because of the tree line and stuff like that, so.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Anybody else want to speak in public forum?
My name is Dale Weems, and I live at six forty second Avenue Southeast. And my concern tonight is. With the speeding that's been happening on Second Avenue. We built the house there in nineteen eighty four, and obviously it wasn't the traffic that's there now. But we have a blind driveway and. A number of near misses as we've come out of our driveway, who's Steven mentioned, and what I have seen there in the past with little children. People taking kids in strollers. Little girls that are on their bicycles, that are on the top of the hill. It's scary, and I've talked to a few people from the area, and unfortunately. It was not really ridiculous. And. Thirty mile an hour speed limit has been changed to twenty. There's no electronic sign there, which is this afternoon, I followed two cars, and one was doing thirty five, and the other one was right behind me. I'm just stating that, that I would. Just really encourage or ask for some help there. I don't know what the final answer is. But the signage is not doing it, and people are continuing to screw it. It's just. This is just reached a peak this year that's been. Been pretty bad. Even the construction workers said. That is amazing, several of them had to jump out of the way because of speeding cars. It's the River Park area, it's, yeah, that's where I live, so.
Dale, did you say southwest?
Southeast.
Southeast, southeast.
So we have those electronic signs, they can record data. Times, speeds, cars, number of cars, so we'll. I know city staff is aware of your situation, and we just put the sign up there maybe. Two weeks ago, I'm guessing. So. I don't, I don't think that's the final answer yet, but we'd like to see some indication. That the average speed is closer to twenty. One question I have is where the actual speed is taken. Because it's, when you start to see it, it's, you're usually going closer to thirty, so by the time you get to the sign, it can be twenty, so I, I need to talk with Kane and talk about that.
It's right, when you think when they get the twenty mile an hour, and they might be doing twenty, but by the time they cross the hill. It's, it's, it's much faster. We have, we have a mailbox that's right across the street, and we have taken to where safety best, we go, we go to our mailbox, and it's just unbelievable, that's what we have to do, but there's. Times I have literally had to jump in the ditch because I was afraid that I was going to get. I've got the finger given to me, I've got a fist, I've got every expression that you can imagine, just because I'm trying to pull out of my driveway, and I cannot see what's coming from the cell. Drastic measures, I think, are the only solution of the.
I would love to say that it'll change, but I don't. Experience as I've had with the people that I, that are doing this. I've had my own mailbox. And a flat, completely open road with nobody in, in the middle of the summer, taken out by the drivers that you're talking about. I, I don't know what will change people, like, that didn't even change them and their behavior, so I, I don't know. I know, I know exactly what you're talking about, and I think it's really unfortunate. I, I don't know, we've, we've really tried to help.
I am, I'm friends with the mayor from the lot of Ingle, and they have quite a bit of concern with Highway sixty and fifty seven, which is a major intersection there. And he said that the people from Minn, don't say, signs don't work. And they got a bomb wire after all these years and numerous accidents. People killed, everything like that. I just don't want to see that happen very, very ill.
Appreciate you coming forward tonight.
Thanks, Dale.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Second, final call for public forum. Third and final call. Public forum. Hi.
Hi, Joy.
Hi, my name is Joy Birdsinger. And my address is six hundred sixth Street Southwest in Orinoco. And just a general comment. I haven't been to many meetings lately, but one of the reasons is, is I have a disability in hearing. And I find it very hard to hear the council members when you speak. When I'm in the audience, and in sitting in the audience tonight even, other people have commented. So just wondering if you ever use speakers, microphones anymore?
Yes, we have some improvements coming, and we'll be talking about it tonight. We're going to install new speakers, and the amplifier in the console that controls those amps was damaged, so we're replacing it as well.
Okay.
So, thank you for sharing those comments, it just reaffirms that we need to improve not only the microphones, but also the sound system too, so.
All right, thank you for hearing my concern.
You're welcome, make sure.
Thank you, Joy.
Those council members, I guess, if we can speak up, I'm sure everybody would appreciate that. And third and final call. We will close public forum at six. Fifty-four. Okay, we have a couple, we have a presentation, I should say. Regarding our Orinoco age friendly survey results. And Rosemary Van Halden, I'd like to have her come forward, she's our committee chair. And. We recently did a survey, so Rosemary, if you care of those results, may look background of the committee.
We have the age friendly Orinoco committee, and we have gotten the survey results. We've been meeting monthly. And. We have sent out our letter of application and our. Letter requesting acceptance into the age friendly network, we would hope to receive the certificate. Last weekend, the weather, because of the weather, that had to be canceled, so it's been delayed for a month, but we will be receiving that certificate. Part of the AARP age friendly network. Jay Happola will be coming from the cities to present that. We've been reviewing, we did the survey, and we've been reviewing the results of that. Looking at and discussing, we did have one meeting with the survey results, and but. We're going to review those some more and formulate our direction of what we're going to do going forward from here. Dan Conway from the area agency on aging suggested that we maybe start by interviewing some of the agencies that provide services in the area. And. From there, we'll take steps, we'll compile some questions, and then interview. The agencies to see what kind of services we can bring into the area. And. One of the big things that we need to do is develop our volunteer base. So. I guess we would want to encourage everybody to be thinking about that and think about groups or individuals that would be available, because. Without volunteers, we can't really. Offer anything to the agencies to encourage them to, to provide the services or help us to get the services out there. And we're also planning to work with the seniors group, the Parks and Trails Committee, first responders, fire department, Lions Club, or who else? Whoever else we can get to work with us on this. As far as volunteering and cooperating. In. January. Dan Conway, who is a consultant from the. Area Agency on Aging. Said that they will be RFPs or grants coming out in January, so we'll be looking at, you know, what things, what expenses, what projects do we want to work on? Possibly tap into that. So, Joy, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I, I think, Rosemary, you've done a, a good job as always, recapping everything, again, we're just waiting to hear more in the survey. On the volunteer part is kind of an immediate thing that we feel the community can benefit from, so I think we'll be working towards that.
Thank you. Thank you, Rosemary.
Thank you, Rosemary. Next item, presentation is regarding our Orinoco Outstanding Citizen presentation, and Bohan Berger from the committee. I'd like to have him share that with us.
Greetings, council, hope everybody's getting ready for fabulous weather we're having. My name is Bohan Berger, along with Mayor Ikurs. Skylar Breitenstein and I formerly served on city council for many years and continue to serve on the Orinoco's Outstanding Citizen Committee. Regretfully, Skylar's son had an away basketball game tonight, and he is unable to be here, but sends his gratitude to council and hopes you appreciate his early holiday gift. That each of you won't have to put up with this coffee brown. He also sends his congratulations to this year's Orinoco's Outstanding Citizen. Many years ago, when we served on city council, Orinoco tragically lost a lifetime businessman, or a longtime businessman, excuse me, Gordy Caravel. Once Skylar came up with the idea for this award to honor Gordy, with help from Gordy's nephew Mac, the support of Gordy's wife Yvonne, and the support of city council. He saw a need to recognize so many people who give back to Orinoco, our hidden gem of a community in southeast Minnesota. Without these types of volunteers, this city wouldn't survive, yet alone thrive. The award hangs to the right as you enter the Orinoco Community Center. Current and past residents can be nominated annually, as long as they have resided and volunteered within the city of Orinoco. The next nomination window will be later this summer or early fall. This year's awardee for twenty twenty-two began volunteering in Orinoco many years with her husband at downtown Orinoco Gold Rush Days. Before long, she saw a need to help Orinoco seniors stay active, and over ten years ago, she began the Young at Heart. Exercise group. Seniors feel welcome to come here to the community center on Wednesday mornings and exercise for exercise, yoga, and support. As that wasn't enough, she saw a need for even more senior outrage, and several years ago began seeking council permission to help Orinoco seniors even more. Her idea turned into the Age Friendly Orinoco Committee, seeking to approve Orinoco area to become more age friendly community, helping to better serve citizens as they age. Here are a few comments about Rosemary's, about Rosemary by local residents. Quote, she has done so much for our seniors and is helping keep people in their homes that want to stay in their homes. Rosemary is caring, compassionate, engaged, and dedicated to the community as anyone you'll ever know. Another resident said, quote, Rosemary has been involved in helping community members for over twenty years. Her concern for others is evident when we discuss the needs of the community. She articulates those needs in a manner that we can understand, which encourages us to continue working towards our goal. I am honored to know her and benefit from her kind and caring soul. She honestly didn't know when she was asked to be here tonight. That this was going to be anything other than a brief update on our age friendly group. So without further ado, I'd like to present this year's Orinoco Outstanding Citizen for twenty twenty-two to Rosemary Van Halden. So rather we need a picture? I've got a. Little certificate from the city for you. And then the city would also like a picture, so they can, who wants to take a picture? Perfect, today's got it. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation.
Congratulations, Rosemary, and thank you, thank you for all your. My favorite meeting of the year because of this.
Definitely is the cornerstone of our age friendly committee. All right. Next item is our. Taxation public hearing. It's an open forum for public comments regarding our. Taxation is resolution. Twenty twenty-two dash point thirty-four, approving the twenty twenty-three final budget and tax levy. Take this backwards here. So just some background. Of that. Our tax. Total final levy for twenty twenty-two is one million. Seventy-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars. And that compares to our current twenty twenty-two total levy of nine hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. That was about, it's, it's, what's being proposed is about a sixteen point seven percent increase in our. In our total levy that's being proposed. And we're kind of a unique situation because our home values, our property values. Of the, the tax passing, the funds we're receiving from Old City County. Did go up sixteen point six percent as well. Home values are increasing, and we're well aware of that, everybody. So at the same time, our rate is staying the same this year as last year, point three seven four. So it's a flat increase, point zero two percent. Or two percent, I should say. Two to one, so, but, so the tax rate is staying the same at point three seven four, which is, continues to be one of the lowest in the county. Or. Which is something that we're. Nice to have, but at the same time, we're also seeing our. Property values increasing. This, a lot of people are throughout the whole county. So with that, anybody would like to speak? To that increase or to that figure? Please step up to the podium and. Share any comments you may have. I know there's been some comments, the city's already heard from. Increases in their tax property for twenty twenty-three, and those discussions and challenges, if you will, for those tax levies increases of property taxes. That happens in our Board of Equalization meeting that we have, usually that's first week in April. And they come here, and we also have the representatives from the Homestead County property records, they'll be here as well. But there's a process that we as a council reflect on, some decision making, but. Some of those cases will also go to the county level as well, they are here to answer those questions at that April meeting, so. That just reminds me for everybody on the council that doesn't have that training, even though we're. Not able to, it should be. It's twenty twenty-four is when we can make any type of actions because of our not getting them all done last year, so. But the county representatives will be here, will hear the arguments. So a second call for public hearing. And. Does anybody have any comments regarding the tax rate, any, I want to make sure there's. If not, third and final call. We'll close the forum at seven. Oh, eight. So for the council, we have resolution. Twenty twenty-two dash thirty-four. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve that resolution?
To that resolution twenty twenty-two thirty dash thirty-four.
And any second.
Any other comments? Yeah. So we're just. We're just. Need to produce correctional. Anyway, he's been ready to call a vote on this resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-four.
Did we change any of those?
No.
No, it's all good.
It's all good.
Excellent. Thanks, Mary. Get shut, the motion was made by.
Dana, second by Jim Phillips.
Thank you. Ready for everyone. Mayor Ikurs.
Aye.
Councilor Bergner.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Phillips.
Right.
Councilor Richards.
Aye.
Councilor Cross.
Mr. President.
Okay.
Okay, that's approved.
Thank you.
Next item is a, a public hearing for. Water bill, that's what. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five. Assessing delinquent water bills. resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five assessing delinquent water bills property taxes. We'll open the public hearing at seven ten. If there's anybody that would like to speak to it, please come to the podium, state your name, address, and fill the form out. Second call for public forum, or public hearing, I'm sorry. And third and final call for public hearing for resolution assessing charges to property taxes payable in twenty twenty-three. So we'll close at seven twelve. So we have two properties that assesses the charges to property taxes. I'll make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five.
One second.
Any other comments? Done, my roll call.
Mayor Aykors?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Phillips?
Right.
Councilor Bergner?
Hi.
Councilor Richards?
Hi.
Councilor Cross?
So Sunny, we moved up item J two, which is the public hearing for the resolution for rezoning from R one to B two for the animal boarding house. J three, I'm sorry. J three, we moved it up to right now before the department and committee reports. Okay, so we're looking at resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty. Just gave you a copy of a second ago. This is a resolution approving rezoning from R one to B two and conditional use permit for animal boarding at eight thirty, second Avenue Southeast, Oronoco.
And Mary, if I can, this this resolution contains all the language that that came directly out of the planning and zoning minutes with their recommendations. The first five are finding the fact for approving the rezoning. And then the second set of five items are the findings of fact for approving the conditional use permit subject to commission conditions, which are then at beginning at the bottom of that resolution. The first one being that the conditional use permit only be approved if the rezoning was approved. So there are eight conditions for that. And then a sub-note after eight that that a kennel license, which is allowable in your city code, but not on your fee schedule yet. Is is also of note there, so.
There's one comment that I want to make on on that for the approval for a conditionally used permit on that one. Okay, if you look at number three. Okay, where it says fifteen dogs. That was overnight on what there was. And there's additional ones, right?
It's on here. I was, I had the same note.
Yeah, so it's like, I just wanted to make sure that we had that one, so.
It's on what she just handed us on the back fifteen, but I did want
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, I, it's the same, I had the same question, but I did want to ask the owners, is fifteen overnight? Is that a large enough maximum?
Thirty-five?
Thirty-five during the day total with fifteen overnight.
Yes.
That is, that's the correct numbers. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, went after what it was in the past, okay.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to double check with that. Perfect.
We would actually like to help.
From thirty-five? Oh, from fifteen?
We'll have to go back through planning and zoning on that one to have them reapprove that one to go through that.
We would.
Yeah, because we had quite a few discussions that there were off of that. And and that was agreed upon by them at that time, so.
Oh, so right now, that's what you can handle, you're saying for future, so then they probably have to apply for another.
I don't know why the council couldn't make that decision.
That's what I'm wondering.
Well, again, if you take a look at what their facilities are available right now and what I saw, fifteen is the right number now. If they change and have something that's done differently to the facility, then it can go with that, but right now with what the facility has got, that's the right number.
But you're right, council. The planning commission makes their recommendation. And council does have the authority to adjust for it. But but I know there was significant conversations about working through this through the process.
And I was, I listened in or I was, or I listened after all of those, so I'm aware of that discussion. I just wanted to ask the home for the business owners if that was truly the number that they thought. So then
I don't think I can hear the fifteen.
I, I, they've watched my dogs and that they've, it's always been fine and two dogs stay in one kennel a lot, so that's why I want to, or not even a kennel, they're like big giant. They're wonderful. And two, so two family dogs stay together. And so I want to make sure that that's still going, you're still going to be able to accommodate that for families that have more than one dog. Perfect, okay?
So I make your recommendation, or is there any other? I was gonna make your recommendation that we adopt a resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty.
A second.
For discussion. I'd like to have a little bit of discussion about the landscaping. I felt like there was a little bit of confusion in the discussion, whether they had to be installed at six feet or grow to six feet.
Well, it's to grow to six feet, but it's also what we have in code on what's required. It's six foot high, right?
Five foot high.
Thought it was six foot high. I don't, I don't have the code here.
Stantex says, in here, it says that we'll grow at least six feet tall and spread. So that they and spread, but I know that there was a lot of discussion back and forth that P and Z was recommending that they needed to be that tall when they were put in. And then there was the, yeah, you did.
You did, because of the not the architectural.
The OACC, the guidelines. When they talk about the green
Green.
The green field.
Green.
Green belt, that's right.
Thank you.
It says the trees or shrubs have to be five feet tall.
Yeah, to start.
To start, at planting, yes. On the six feet intervals or whatever the
They must grow to at least six feet is what it says here. That's in Stantex. I don't know if that's the code. I just have concern, I just have concerns with a business that's been here for so long and done so well and had no, there's been no reports of anybody's knowledge of putting that strict timeline on them. You know, I'd just like to see them given a little bit more.
Where given more time.
Right, just until September, but I, I mean, it's still within the year. So I was, I would just like to see maybe till twenty twenty-four, summer of twenty twenty-four. That was my only thought, and that's just because of the good standing they have in the community and the fact that there's never been complaints. There is nobody on that side as far, you know, it's an empty field, there won't be anything between now and twenty twenty-four. So that's just, that, those are my thoughts. I just would like to see them given a little bit of a little longer grace. I know you gave them a longer grace period, I would like to see even a longer grace period.
I think the other thing to consider though, too, it's not them, they are actually selling it. So it would be the new owners that that would bring it up to code and and I think, I mean, we've already, we've already given given them a little leeway on it. Because if we do it, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to look at doing this for for others if they want.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to keep everything uniform on where we're doing, where we're moving ahead and the green belt issue is gonna come up more and more on other facilities that there are around town that are kind of lacking in some of those things that are going on. And so we don't want to set the precedence, we did it by allowing them to have that extra time to be able to do that. And that's why we agreed in that extra time that was there.
I think too that we could, and this is, this is kind of the situation of paving the parking lots. We have, it's required for M one properties. And we still have businesses that haven't paved, but it's, it's an open-ended, it's an expense, but at the same time, the September date is, I think it's a, it's a good, a good date, but at the same time, I know that the property around it, we don't know. It could be developed by September or starting to develop by, for sure by twenty twenty-four. I think just because the sewer project interest is going to be there, that land is going to be developed, so I'd prefer to keep the September thirty, twenty twenty-three date. And with the understanding that the, the new owners may come back and and ask for an extension and that's I think that's a very legit request to do that, too.
Is, is that what the, all the people who haven't paved have done? Have they asked for an extension or have they just not complied?
They get the letter every year
Okay.
from city staff that it was required to be done. And some have done it and one, and some have not yet done it, but they're still being brought to their attention that they need to do that.
Did they formally ask for an extension? I'm just wondering. It's because I do think it's nice for people to know that that is an option if, if things are, if they're strapped or, you know, and that we may.
It's, nobody called an extension, I maybe used the wrong word there, we didn't really ask, a letter being sent to them, but no response, we sent them another letter.
We were trying to be a little bit more formal on how we're doing these things and and, and so there has been one of them that that's been paved, which was an issue that was coming up that that got done. You know, and so especially if we're moving forward with CED and what we're trying to do in the community, that we need to adhere to some of those things, because other businesses that come in, if they don't say that we're adhering to the, the people that are here, then we're gonna have an issue with that, so.
Is that okay?
No.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good point, and I think that if we like to plant trees either in the fall or spring, too, that matter. Any other discussion or comments? If not, let's receive with a roll call.
Mayor Aykors?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Phillips?
Hi.
Councilor Bergner?
Hi.
Councilor Richards?
Hi.
Councilor Cross?
Very good. Thank you. Go back to our agenda here and water and sewer, Sergeant Chambers, it's not here. Unless he sent you something. Sergeant Chambers?
No, he missed.
Okay.
But we'll start that in twenty twenty-three. I've asked him for activity for the city, so that we're kind of tracking some of that and he gets released there. Thank you.
Okay, so we have some FYIs. And Joe, you want a pair of update on the sewer plant contract one?
Yeah, absolutely. There is a memo in the packet that does a nice job summarizing where the contractor is at through December sixth. And then beyond that, the contractors continue to work, they're assembling the domes that go on top of the sliding door tanks. They've started to install remaining doors and garage doors. The admin build, the admin building brick facade is essentially largely constructed. And then they continue with miscellaneous piping work and and electrical mechanical work throughout the facility, so things kind of continue to progress. Contractor is working this week. Things are slowing down with the weather, obviously, I suspect they might not be working tomorrow or the next day.
What? Why?
And they are taking the week between Christmas and New Year's on. So, and that's pretty common, especially with the weather, so. One update, we've got a bit of a challenge that we're working through with the gas company. We have a allowance within the contract, a fifty-five thousand dollar allowance to bring electric and gas and communications to the wastewater treatment facility. And the estimate from the gas company to extend gas to the treatment facility is about a hundred grand at this point. Which needless to say is far in excess of what was estimated. Their stance kind of is, is that the gas main needs to be brought from Hunter Street, which we knew, we just didn't expect in their initial estimate that they gave us, didn't assume that the city would be paying a hundred percent of that cost. So because you're the first user, you apparently have to pay the gas main, which in a meeting last week, I told them I didn't think was fair or equitable. So we're gonna kind of continue to have some conversations, looking at some different alternatives, potentially extending gas from the south rather than the north to Oronoco Estates. And then also, I think, you know, if the costs continue to look to, to, to be that high or unreasonable, I think we should look at propane. So I'm sending some information to the gas company, we'll have some additional correspondence, and then they're gonna put together an estimate after the first of the year. Apparently they're pricing updates and they don't want to do it until then. So I'll bring that back to the council when I know more. Hopefully, we can come to a reasonable resolution, that's one item that surprised me. And hopefully, we can work out something more equitable than what's being proposed at this point.
Quick question, if we go to propane, that there is behind it, are we still in the right time to be able to change the burners on everything?
I don't know that it's burners on everything, I think there's fittings or I, I've got to ask, but I understood that there are orifices that need to be changed, or small components within the equipment that would need to be changed, but not catastrophic in, in any stretch of the imagination from what I'm understanding, so we'll kind of dig into that farther and see how much gas we really are using. I don't think we're a real big user out there. We're a much bigger electric user than we are a gas user, so. We'll see, see what our options are, I'll kind of assemble that information, we'll bring it back and talk about it when I can talk a little bit more intelligently about it. It's just an item that came up last week, it's on my mind. And like I say, I don't.
Because the long-term propane might be a good option, just because as that area potentially develops. Well, the Oronoco Estates side or our side.
You know, in my mind, it's probably a short-term solution, because let somebody else pay to extend the main out there, then they can be the first one to do it. Somebody's gonna do it, I don't, it just doesn't seem to be fair, in my opinion, that the city should bear all that cost when Oronoco Estates, for example, immediately self the treatment plant is planning to expand, Matthew is talking about a, a, a Batumis plant and other, other people are talking about potential improvements and they would all use gas, so why should we? Potential improvements and they would all use gas, so why should we foot the bill?
So did. So did they, did the gas company give us that number, was that just an estimate?
They gave us an estimate a year and a, probably two years ago now.
And they failed to mention that we would have to do, have to pay all of them.
Well, this. Yeah.
You only came party in town, so yeah.
Isn't there something that we can do to hold them to it? You know, it, it's an estimate.
We didn't get a written estimate, cause they wouldn't give us one. So it was uh.
Good as the paper is written on.
Wow, yeah.
Well, I mean, the LP might, might be a, a good way to look at it, you know. And then, and throw that at them.
I did throw that out. So we'll see. They might not.
May I want to explain the feasibility report too?
Yeah, they'll, they'll assemble their, their feasibility report after the new year changes and their pricing's updated for the new year and then we'll have a more accurate look at it. I gotta get them some information about potential routes to the south and. We'll start to pull some of the other information together too, I just wanted to let you know that.
The hundred thousand will now go to a hundred and twenty next year.
Well, we'll see.
Or, or can we push it, is it, is it one person or is it? The person from above that makes those decisions that are saying, hey, this is the way it is?
Yeah, that occurred to me too, yeah, so may, maybe. Maybe, um. I, I guess I'm open to any avenues that we have, I just.
You know, working from Orinoco Estates, going north, going that direction.
I agree. We'll, we'll look at a few options and see what we can do. Work out something more. Anything in the update? Uh, in the memo or what we're seeing out there that folks have questions about, I'd invite you out, but. Anytime soon would probably be not so fun, so maybe, maybe in the, in the new year.
I had a question from a neighbor, so the river park behind Ryland House, the, the, um. Lift station. Is the infrastructure, is, is the, are we still needing to dig in place, place the piping, or is that using the current?
So we use it. Um, I'm just looking to see if there's the. Where the lamps are for that area, uh, we use a combination of existing force main.
Here's the lift station.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly, so here is the lift station. Uh, we put in a new structure there, there's an existing lift station that will replace. There's existing force main that you can see on this map in, in gray that gets us to here, that's an existing four inch force main, so we use this. Section of existing force main and then this new force main was installed this last summer.
Okay, so that.
That gets us to the big lift station.
Perfect, so that, so everything, like the road, um.
Still have to hook in.
You're right, but the road. They have to hook in.
There's a little bit of piping work that'll have to.
Oh, from that, from two, yes, okay, I'm.
Just right out in front and then of course there's driveway construction and all types of things.
But that's all existent, all right, okay, that's basically, that's. What I understood, so I just wanted to make sure, just relating the correct information.
Along those same lines, there's, there's, and we'll do this with Cedar Brooklands and Riverwood Hills and River Park is that. All those lines and the streets will be televised. Make sure, because we're taking over the vengeance of them, so they'll be.
Oh, and then mapped. Which will be nice.
Find out where they really do go.
Perfect, thank you.
Anything else on the treatment facility update? So the next item we do have is a change order, uh, that is also in the packet. Now, the change order. Contains, well, the net result of the change order is a thirty six thousand dollar add, and so to get the thirty six thousand dollars, we've got essentially six adds. To the contract and two deducts to the contract. The net result of the change order is that we're still about thirteen thousand dollars underneath the original bid amount for the treatment facility. And within the change order, we do kind of talk about the eight items. They're kind of a hodgepodge of, uh, different things that. Have required adjustment or modification or additional costs for the treatment facility itself. And so they're kind of itemized A through H. Uh, and then the cost for each of those. Eight individual items are kind of summarized on the second sheet, and then in addition to that, there's. Uh, a pretty significant packet of information, um, that we didn't attach to the. Or include in the packet, cause it's, it's about. Sixty, sixty-five pages, something like that. Um, but that's essentially the, um, information from the contractor, shop drawings, revised, um. Sheets that all kind of feed into the change order and support the cost, so. We went back and forth with the contractor a few times on a number of these, uh, the contractors made some concessions in terms of price. I think, you know, overall. It's, it's, it's a reasonable, fair, reasonable and fair change order, there's a few items I think are a bit high, but. Uh, there's a few other items that I think the contractor was, was, was more than fair with us, so. That's kind of where we're at. In terms of the overall cost. Any items, and we talked about this at Sewer and Water a little bit, or quite a bit, uh, last week, but are there any items that the council specifically wants to? Touch on or talk about, or I, you know, I can go through them all too if you want, but I know we've already been here since five thirty, so.
I think the thing that, that stood out to me in the meeting is that. The original contract amount was twenty million, six hundred and sixty seven thousand. Um, and right now we're at twenty million, six hundred and fifty three thousand with these changes, so we're right. In line with what there is for the original quote of, of what we've been doing, so I think you've done a very good job on, on keeping that. At that level, you know, so.
And, you know, I remind the council, we still do have that contingency.
Yeah, but without getting into the contingency, that's why.
You know, that's.
We're sitting in a good place, yeah.
And the contractor continues to, to make good, good progress, um, you know, the. The biggest question is how was instruments, controls and electrical components, um, we're. Still being told that we're looking at delivery this spring, which would put us on target for. Substantial completion and final completion when we're supposed to. Uh, and in this day and age, that's pretty good.
I'm impressed.
You know, I'm impressed.
Everything that's going on, everything that's done. Absolutely.
Um, there is a contractor, uh, coordination meeting, I believe on the tenth. With Staub, January tenth, you're all welcome to that. I'll also mention that there is a scheduled coordination meeting with Fitzgerald on Thursday at ten. I'm not sure if we're gonna meet or not. We'll see, yes. And one of the big items at that Thursday meeting is Gold Rush and impacts to downtown contractors looking at some sequencing. Uh, some staging plans and scheduling, uh, we've been. Asked them very specifically, what are you gonna do, when are you gonna do it? And how can we minimize impacts to Gold Rush, so we're gonna be working through that and having that discussion.
We gonna go to that one?
Yeah, I was gonna go to it and, um. Dana, whoever wants to go through, I mentioned at the November meeting, last meeting, that we needed to start the discussions. And, um, so they. Multiple times said we'll work with you, but at the same time, uh, we need to have, we'll find out. I know we'll get the final decision this week, but. In the January, February timeframe at the latest is what we need to make sure we're okay for it or not.
But if you, I, I'd like to go to it, but if it's gonna be done on Thursday, I can.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think that's a deal.
I can't do anything extra this week, so. But I would love to hear. If you have it, I'd love to hear.
Yeah, absolutely.
The results.
We'll see what they say and, and.
Would, would you go with a kind of a map of, of the area that we used last year?
Yes, we circled the area.
That, okay.
In fact, it's on that.
Okay.
Map in the back, you'll see a big green line around.
Okay.
Exact same area. Uh, one of the questions we have is the, the traffic route on the east side. And we'll talk more detail about that. We don't finalize anything, but we'll just continue the discussion and. Maybe in January, we'll. Have something to the February Gold Rush meeting, I should say.
Okay, perfect, yeah, just keep me updated.
All right, I'm making a mo, I'll make a motion, we approve the change order number two. Any other comments? Do you have a little favor, see if I'll be saying hi? Two and three contracts?
Uh, well, we started the discussion on that just a little bit, um, I will also. Mention that on that map back there, every month we go through that and kind of color code. I think in blue we used last time, but if you're curious as to what has been installed or what's in the ground. Uh, the map, everything in blue highlight on that big map back there illustrates what's been placed, so we'll update that tomorrow or Thursday. Presuming we have a meeting. Contractor continues to make some progress, um, with weather conditions. Allow, uh, they continue to work on lift stations, uh, and some, um. Piping within Riverwood Hills over by Oriole Pike Park, uh, and then, of course, at. The, uh, lift station that we've already had talked about. So. All, and, and the other pieces, the, the outfall line coming up out of the river. And so that is just about tied together. So that, that's good.
I have seen one erosion rule put down. But the station one, one A, by the, the station behind us, they put one down through the ditch.
That continues to be a, kind of a source of frustration. With our contractor. So we will definitely talk about that tomorrow.
Say, say that again?
They did excavations, a lot of dirt and everything, typically you're supposed to put erosion control devices rolls down and.
We're struggling. And, uh, comply with. What we expect for erosion control, but we continue to talk about that.
Are they working this week then at all?
They really aren't, in fact, they're off through the rest of the year, uh, they kind of wrapped it up. Uh, earlier this week. I think they worked a little bit on Monday, um. They had, uh, a drilling crew here, subcontractor here yesterday, um. But, uh, they don't have much going on right now, I think they're pretty much off with the weather through the holiday. And maybe even through the new year, or through the December, through the new year.
Minnesota January is not nice anyway, but hopefully.
We will put out another, um, resident notice here pretty shortly, I think impacts are. Pretty modest at this point, but I think people still like to know what's going on, I've kind of pulled it back for once every three weeks rather than every other week, just because. It's a bit slower, a lot slower, um, so we'll, we'll continue on that. That path, that's all right?
Did they, did they finish up on station three, Riverwood Hills?
Not to my knowledge, but I haven't.
No, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Okay. Any other comments for Joe? Okay, thank you, Joe. Uh, Public Works. We have three action items. Gentle in the packet from Kane. This one is a water system upgrade from in controls. I would make a motion that we approve. In controls proposal for sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty five dollars. And that we would use American Rescue Plan funds.
That was my question on that, is where that was gonna come from after that, so.
That's a great idea, a great use for the funds, uh, last year. We used, uh, those rescue funds for, uh. The reservoir mixer and the inspection and cleaning of the reservoir as well, so. Great use of those funds.
Yeah, I think so too, and we have. Okay, let's just take this one by one here then. So was there a second of my motion?
One second then.
Yeah, okay. This is, um. We put the system in and Joe. And you can speak to this too, it's a basic system. And very basic, but it got, it did what we wanted to do, but now we're just upgrading it, so.
So when, uh, during this last construction season with, uh, water tie-ins and improvements. There's times when the reservoir isn't available to all of the town. So you'll have to valve off and, uh, isolate parts of town. And so when you, when you turn those wells on, they just run at a, a constant speed. So you're wasting the water unless you're using it, so. With this new control system, it's kind of like the smart system, you know, uh, like your air conditioner at home. It doesn't need to run at a hundred percent, it only needs to run at fifty percent, right? It's just on, uh, usage, so if you're using a lot of water, it's gonna ramp up, it's gonna give you more water out of our wells. If usage is really low, it'll ramp down, slow way down to that minimum speed. To maintain a set point, so. Kind of the smart controls versus the old trusted controls, which worked. But very, very simple and, and, uh, not really user friendly, so.
And you've got that many more people that are gonna be going onto the water too, so. I think it becomes more important to be able to control that.
I think, I think as the city grows and, and future. Add-ons and tie-ins to the system are, are gonna require more, um, flexibility from us, so. This is, this is one component of the water system that I believe will help us out.
For everybody's benefit too, we keep the reservoir about thirty percent?
Uh, right now, we're keeping it a little bit higher, uh, uh, we are, uh, our usage is up a little bit more as well, so that helps, uh. But having that, uh, turnover in our reservoir, having that fresh water in there. And then our mixer is, is working well every day, we're checking that, so. We know that our, our water quality is up there, we're testing every day, so we know our, our chemical residuals are there, there's no bacteria, so. We're keeping the water a little higher. Uh, there are certain parts of town, higher elevations where they kind of depend on that, that extra few feet in the tower, so. That's what we're trying to accommodate.
Any other comments?
I have a question, if I may. On this, so this is all analog? Analog system?
Me, what, what part of the system, I guess? In, in what regard, I guess?
Well, I was, I was looking at the, you know, me, I'm all about the numbers, um, the proposal summary. Shows the, the total at sixteen thousand and then there is a deduct for item three. That, that, the materials are a four channel analog output module.
Right, a, a PLC, uh, so what that does is that, uh, allows a pressure at each wellhouse. We take a device and measure the pressure of the pipe, pressure of the water system, and that tells our, our. Pump, our well, to speed up or slow down based on what you wanna set that at. So you can say, all right, I wanna set this well at fifty pounds and run, so it's gonna ramp up based on usage. Slow feed up, slow down.
So I think your question is, you know, electronics wise off of that, which makes sense. But I think with what Kane is saying, that you need to have that meter, that's a pressure meter. That's probably analog by what it reads for pressure. But I, I see, I could, I had it marked also too for input and also for output, both of them. But I, I see, I could, I had it marked also too for input and also for output, both of them. Of that, that analog, so.
So right now, all it says is, uh, hey, I'm low, turn on. That's what the well does right now. With this new system, it'll say, hey, I'm two pounds away, I need to speed up a little bit. Or I'm two pounds away, I need to slow down a little bit. And it's that smart, uh, control. That will maintain that, that desired pressure.
So I think also what, what, what you're asking on that, any of two, that we stay. That this is, uh, um, the newest version that there is of, of this particular type of, okay?
Yeah, I'd go with that.
So it's. Setting us up a little more for the future?
Yes, and then of course too, you know, when, when that reservoir is offline. For an emergency or a planned outage or whatever, you know, we can hit this pressure mode on both wells. And, and they can, they can adjust and modulate to maintain a pressure without that reservoir. Without that as our, our, our supply. So it's. It's, it's a needed, it's a needed feature, I believe, of the, of the water system.
So you control that in your office then after that, or?
Oh, I wish, I wish, uh, you know, that's.
Not that good.
We're not that good, you know, and that, and that was some discussion that we had is, you know, uh. Here's the next feature they can offer us. Which we can control from the wellhouses. The next step from that would be something that would be a web-based program. We could get it on our smartphones, our iPads. And you could be on vacation, sitting on the beach and say, turn on the well, turn off the well, so.
That, that's the Mercedes.
That's the Mercedes.
The Buick.
This is, uh.
Right?
But will it work that if we go to that next step, you can still use the same stuff or not?
Components of it you will, but at some point we'll have to go to an actual, uh, front-end computer-driven system. You know, a s- a server versus a local SCADA PLC.
What's your projection on how soon for that? Are we gonna, are we gonna be required based on our water and sewer project? To move that way anytime soon?
I, I don't think so. I, I'd say. Ten years from now. I, I think we can get definitely a good ten years out of this system and, and who knows, depending on growth and. And the water usage, maybe a new well is in the future, a new tower, a new. Skies the limit, so.
And you're checking the wells every day, so you, you're in the wellhouse every day anyway to check this pressure too.
Yeah, and, and we do that not only for the Department of Health standards, but we, for our own standards, we want to make sure. You come in Monday morning, you're not walking into a, a jungle, so. We're checking seven days a week.
Alright. Any other comments?
Good. Thanks, Kane.
All those in favor, sign if I'd be saying hi.
Well, one more discussion. If, I'm just wanting to make sure when we approve. The amount. It didn't include a sales or taxes, so I just want to make sure we get everything.
Let's move it down.
So how much do you think?
The amount?
So the price in the recommendation is the same price that's on the proposal, but it said that excludes sales and taxes. Or sales taxes, then you tax them. So do we need to consider that?
I, I don't think we pay, we don't pay tax.
Uh, what about shipping costs? Other than the primary.
I just want to make, yeah.
Primary project site, okay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we purp- it's the correct number, amount of money.
And freight is included.
Yeah, 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 to the primary project site, so.
Okay, perfect.
Is there a timeframe for when they would do it?
You know, this is something that could be done this winter, uh, you know. It's all indoor work, so.
There's a, you don't, you don't anticipate any big lead times.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
My plan is to have it, uh, up and running for, uh, the construction season, twenty twenty-three.
Sorry.
All those in favor, signify by saying hi.
Right.
I, most.
We made a motion. Island. Seconded by.
That was a while ago.
Yeah, what were we talking about?
Yeah.
Good questions.
Yep.
Well, it's good.
Good questions. Actually, I wanted to start with the, uh, relief valve, because that's only, you know, fifteen hundred bucks. Wanted to work into that.
Go.
But, thank you.
So the relief valve is, um. Just explain in your memorandum too, we can.
So, so the relief valve, uh, that's kind of, uh. The last step, when your reservoir is offline, when you're isolating different parts of the system and your wells are running. Your relief valve is set on a hydrant, yet for some reason, the pressure gets too much. And the PLCs and the controls don't work, you've got this relief valve that just, poof, shoots off water into the ditch. And that's your, I mean, that's your, uh. Your final step as, so. You won't overpressurize your pipes and burst your pipes and, you know, you think about sitting at the kitchen faucet with a glass of water and all of a sudden. You know, it shoots out a hundred pounds at just, so that relief valve is used throughout the system. Last year, we used, uh, a combination of three, two from Pine Island and one from Rochester.
So we don't have any?
We don't have any. And so what it, it puts us in a predicament, because we're borrowing them and scheduling and.
But they want it back.
And then they want it back, and I feel kind of like, okay, so my plan is. I would like to purchase one out of this year's budget, twenty twenty-two. And then twenty twenty-three, I would like to purchase another one. That way, with the two wells, if we ever have to isolate. Uh, River Park and Riverwood Hills, each one would have a relief valve.
Where do they go?
They go, well, you can put them anywhere, any hydrant.
With the fire hydrant.
A fire hydrant, yeah. So we just try to find a, a ditch that they can blow off into and, and not corrupt anyone's property. So this all happened last year. There was three of them going several times throughout the summer and. I don't know if anyone noticed them or not, so. Which is good. It, in, in my mind, if you guys don't notice anything with the water, that means we're doing a good job, so.
Is that in the budget then for next year, or we can work, we'll hear about that next year?
Let's just, uh.
Get the one this year?
Yeah, if we could take that out of the water utility budget, uh, operating supplies or.
We could use American Rescue Fund.
Sure could.
It's, it's an improvement to your water distribution, so.
Sure could do that as well.
How much money do we have in there for the American?
A hundred and five thousand.
I mean, should, should we buy two of them then, if that's the case, and, and do it that way and, and have two?
No, it doesn't come out of next year's budget.
Yeah.
I was thinking of just taking out of the water utility budget. That's why I proposed the one now, one next year, but. If, if that's what you guys want to use is the rescue funds.
Well, if we have, if we have money in our budget, we can buy one with that and then one with the American Rescue, so we can split it.
That's fine too.
Then get them both now.
If there's, there's funds left, I agree with you, uh, there's no reason why we shouldn't use the budget in twenty twenty-two and, yeah.
So each valve is eighteen hundred and forty dollars. That's one that, that we've used, we've used several of these, uh, from Rochester and Pine Island, but. The one that we like most is that, uh, eighteen forty from Superior Sales and Service.
So we do have.
We have budget for this year, plus we have the American Rescue, right? You got budget this year?
Budget? Yeah, I got my budget paid here. Well, not the water utility. I don't get the water utility budget.
I don't know if you've developed. Budgets for your enterprise funds. Yeah. Well, it's coming.
Uh.
But we can still. But you're talking about the, the twenty twenty-two budget. Use the water utility fund for it, because there is a line item for repair equipment.
Yep.
The six hundred fund.
In the six hundred fund, there's operating supplies, there's repair and maintenance.
What do we look like there?
Like I said, I don't get the six hundred funds. I only get the one hundreds.
But did you do a budget for this water fund?
We looked at it, yeah. That's how we, we, our reserves are doing our expenditures. It's not, it's not a tax, but we do review them, yes. Because that's how we, we look at how we, uh, balance our fees increases, make sure we cover not only our loan, but also the expenses too.
Right. I haven't seen that part, okay. So.
Hope you can touch base on that.
Yeah, because we need to be doing, looking at our fee schedule next year.
Mm-hmm. So that's, and that fee schedule tends, tends to be the, while we're getting real topic, your PFA loan with about three percent, two, three and a half percent. So like the body proposes this. We've done that year after year, keeps us neutral a little bit above water.
Okay, then.
Okay. We thank Chris.
So, well, if there's a question, I, I have no problem with. Use American Rescue Plans for buying two of these.
Yeah, and then, and then we've got them.
Fantastic.
But do we have a motion yet?
Yeah, because you have those, those utility loan payments.
Mm-hmm.
That just started. It, as a result of the audit last year. When they came with those. Figures. So, okay, so.
Look, long and short of it is, we have money and it's back on.
American Rescue Plan.
The Rescue Plan on.
Perfect.
And, and, and is it that? That carries over, right?
Yep, we have to use it by December twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, is there a deadline?
Yeah, but I just think we ought to get.
Well, yeah, then we can give others back and say thank you.
Yeah.
So we make a motion to buy two then, with the American Rescue? I'll make a motion that we buy two. Okay, uh, with the American Rescue. Plan, plan funds that we have.
Second.
You seconded it?
Yeah. I have to speak up.
So what we'll do here in the next, for the January meeting, we should, we'll pass a resolution. Let's run, take care of the, um, because we have assigned a resolution to the leveler or the, um. Mixer. The mixer, the controls, and these two ready files, we did all one as a water infrastructure resolution, using the American Rescue Plan funds. Now helping with that resolutions like the other ones, yes.
Okay, the three things mixer?
Oh, the resolution is a mixer, which is on that spreadsheet already that I have.
Oh, okay.
Uh, this, uh, main controls sixteen thousand and this, uh, thirty-six eighty for these two ready files. Yeah, pretty succeed. Any other comments? Do you have all those in favor, so you can probably say hi?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. Uh, last item tonight is a purchase of a, a second snowplow for our newest pickup. Uh. Right now, we've got the one pickup with plow. A second truck with the plow would, would be very beneficial. Uh, can cover a lot more ground with the plow versus the Bobcat. Even versus our ATV, uh. I, I, I called around three different places, the same exact plow that we have, that way the parts are the same. Uh, everyone's familiarity is the same with the plow and the equipment, so, uh. Here you see three bids in front of you, uh. Truck to America, uh, they're right down the road, uh, right off Highway fifty-two. Flagship Chevrolet. And then of course, uh, Kirsch Truck and Diesel in Owatonna. I put some notes there by those, those figures and. I like the, I like Rochester, but that'd be my number one pick, because they're right down the road. If we needed service, if we needed, uh. Parts, they're, they're our closest. Uh, that means a lot to me, but then again, uh. We're looking at here dollars and cents. So.
It's availability.
So they're, they're available. These plows are all built in, uh. Michigan, so they're. Yep, readily available, uh, and these are all installed prices. These are on the pickup, uh, ready to work.
Kane, can you get service in Zambroda though?
Hmm, so Zambroda. They're kind of new to the plow game, uh, and that's what they do. They just do. Boss plows, they install them, where that first one, Truck in America, uh, from our last council meeting, we bought a diesel tank there. They have. More trucking accessories and things that I, I think we'll use in the future.
In a shop.
In, in a shop, they're local, uh, you know, the owners, they, they live in town here, uh. Not that that should persuade us, but, uh. Like I said, my number one pick would be Truck to America, just because of the, the distance and availability and.
And you have funds, you say, in twenty, in our current budget?
So if, if you do look at the current budget, I've got, got two different funds you could. Because snow removal is a citywide service. It's parks, it's a little bit of streets and alleys. It's fire hall, city hall, public works, water, it will be sewer someday, right? Uh, uh, parks and trails, so. Feel like it could be that, that ten thousand and change we're talking about. If you go to one budget, snow removal, I mean, that's what I think of when I think of a snowplow, should come out of snow removal. And if you look at that fund, we've got thirty-two thousand and change. Then again, I think about snowplow like, uh, street maintenance, another budget item, where it's twenty-six thousand and change, so. I mean, we could go through the whole budget, pick apart parks, a little bit of water, a little bit of, uh, streets and roads.
It's, I guess we have to. Really decide on which, which of the bids that we want to take, you know. I know it's more. I, I personally, I would, I'm a little concerned with the Zambroda shop, just being that they're not really established yet. It sounds like.
Right, they are, they are new to this. I think if this was, uh.
And so let me ask, if, if something goes wrong with that plow, can you take it to Trucking America and have them fix it?
Correct, yes.
You can.
Yep.
Okay.
And so, I mean, you look at the one two from Owatonna, that, that is cheaper, but, you know. Two guys driving over there, two pickups driving over there, and then driving back and then driving over to pick it up again. I mean, it's. The wages and the fuel there, I. Think we could eat up that.
Yeah, three hundred sixty-nine dollars.
We could eat up that pretty easy, um.
I guess I, I'd make a motion. That we approve. The purchase of the snowplow from flagship Chevrolet in Zambroda. Given the fact that it can be serviced anywhere.
I would second that.
Yeah, okay. Alright, any other comments?
I just have one question for clarity. Your recommendation, it, the quotes are for the exact same plow and equipment. Plus installation, so. But I thought you said it included installation. So I, I'm just a little confused.
So everything is installed. Those numbers you see, that's an installed price.
Okay, so it's not plus installation, it's with installation.
Including, okay.
Right, including, if I misspoke there, sorry, uh. Those prices are, uh, installed out the door.
Kane, how, how long before we buy a new truck?
So, that's a good question, uh.
Sorry, I was just.
My plan would be to purchase one twenty twenty-three. On new CIP funds. And, and with that being said, Dana, I would, any new truck that we purchase. Will include a plow. I think we had discussions about this at budget time is. You know, buy the truck.
Yeah.
But then budget for that plow, the toolboxes, the whatever, have that a complete truck, done deal. That year's budget and, you know, say we save these trucks for three to five years is what I'm thinking. That way we got some good resale value out of them and, uh. That way we got some good resale value out of them and, uh. Keep, keep our inventory within a, a few years of each other. So that way we don't have a truck from the eighties and then two trucks from twenty twenty, so.
And this truck, the truck that we're adding the plow to is a newer?
It's our latest truck.
It's our latest truck, okay, perfect, and so none of the, all the trucks of the two, two that we have, two, three?
We have two, uh, uh, plow trucks, uh, three quarter ton, one ton trucks. We do have a smaller half ton truck that will not handle a plow, and that's the one that will be.
Rotating out?
Rotating.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, so these other three will be our main ones of that guy or girl with this twenty twenty three purchase.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
I, I wanna purchase a twenty twenty three, yes.
And that would be the one that it was replaced or that, that little guy for the, okay, all right, thank you.
Any other comments? Say none, all those in favor, sign if everybody's saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, close. Approved.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Kane.
So fire department, um, question in the report. Uh, that Dan submitted, the bills, there's about four thousand dollars worth of bills there. Numbers, do we approve those bills, motion?
Well, I'm still trying to understand what.
Cause we do have other bills here, but these.
My understanding is that if it's under five hundred dollars, nobody needs to approve it. If it's over five hundred, it needs some counsel, I'm listing them. Simply as a matter of keeping you apprised of costs.
There are some.
Three of them.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing that I'm just gonna say this kind of, um. Just as a numbers person kind of. You know, you've got five invoices for fire safety. So it's, you know, although one is, or two of them are over the five hundred dollars. You gotta be careful about when you start splitting up those things, so you don't give that appearance to an auditor. That you're, you're intentionally trying to circumvent whatever your policy is, so. Throw on that out there.
One, um, I don't know. This is fire, but they're all so similar, one of the things that we talked about at the first responders meeting in. Jim and Ryland, where you might be able to go to the fire department meeting.
Oh, it's a relief meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, the annual meeting.
I don't know if they discussed anything, but I, I just, they were, they discussed some frustration and. In our, in the processes and, and kind of. And I expressed.
Having to come to ask, right?
Yeah, there's that, but then there's also, you know, they express frustrations and having to give receipts, and then I thought, well, that's kind of. That's really, really basic. And even gas receipts specifically, they were, they were really unhappy about that, and I, I was just like. That's really basic, like.
So at the annual meeting, they did give me gas receipts.
So there's just a lot of, I think, I think, and I suggested this to them. That we all, council, OFD, OFR, sit down and have a really, like. Kind of discussion about our policies, procedures and expectations, because I think all of us are a little confused about everything right now. Like, I think the, the, the actual first responders and fire department. New, there's so many new people recently, I don't know if they really know the proper procedures, because what's happening is. A lot of the, the first responders are purchasing equipment, um. Shelving jackets, whatever, with their own personal cards, which they shouldn't really be doing. Dan should be buying that with the card, card from the city. And that's happening, I mean, that's the stuff we're seeing in these packets, and I, that is like a big red plague to me, I don't like that.
Yeah, and I know they're. Yes, I agree, Kane's gone, I know they were reimbursing, um, there was some orgis- organizational stuff.
Yeah.
That happened, and I know they're in the meeting, um, I can't remember her name. But anyway, they were reimbursing for that.
Correct, but like I said, you know, and it had taken a while to get reimbursed, and they were frustrated, and I said, my first. But I said, my first question is, why are you buying that with your personal card? That should never be the case, because you could be earning sky miles, Costco points, thousands of dollars you're putting in, that's not okay. And so my, so I think we all just need to have a conversation.
And I think it's not okay for them to do it, because then they have to wait to get paid back.
It's not, it's not good for in any, for anybody, you know?
But that's where planning comes in, they should be planning when they want to make this purchase, not be impulse. To be reimbursed to get it right away, and that's, we don't expect that from Kane either.
If there is a better way, if there is a better way, as far as do they need a better, a bigger limit on their car, or do there, you know, is there other things? We need to have that discussion, but I just think there's real lack of open communication between us and them. It seems like right now, and especially with all the newer people, so I suggested having a meeting where we all kind of. Um, like a workshop where we discuss, like, lay out the policies and procedures that, and our expectations, and then, then, you know. I don't know, that's what I'm hoping to do in the new year.
So at the meeting, um, this is at the relief meeting, and then Sunny and I talked and so over. What I asked the treasurer to do for the fire leave is to set a meeting up this summer. He's done that yet or not, but the plan is to have that discussion at Sunday, but if, if we want the council to be involved, that's fine too, because.
Who is the treasurer now, is it Leif?
Adam Schaefer, the Relief Association Treasurer.
I thought Leif got pulled in this, or is he?
I think Adam's.
No, Leif is the gambling manager.
Oh, he's the manager, okay, and he, oh, and he's the manager and Adam's the.
Treasurer, for the Relief Association.
But the gambling and the Relief Association are tied, because gambling funds are really associated.
Our department is separate, but we.
Correct, but.
Talk with that treasurer first and.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think, and I, but I do really think that the, the fire chief and they, and first responders. President, I don't know what they call it, and vice chair, whatever, they need to be.
The training and director.
And, and you, they all need to be, I think, personally, I think they need to be all on this, because I don't, I just think it's a communication issue. I don't think it's anything other than that, I think it's a communication issue.
When you look at the memo here, and we're approving fourteen hundred and fifty four dollars for some piece of equipment, but yet there's. Boots and everything else, that's three, four thousand dollars, there's. Membership, but I do think there is a, we need to have a re discussion with Dan for sure. And maybe he can share with us what the, what his understanding is, and if he agrees with ours, or whether we differ, but I think. We should have a discussion with Dan.
Dan is the one that, that. Was that via you or? Dan told me that he didn't have, he was told he didn't have to keep receipts, and I'm saying. Keep receipts.
For like the gas.
I typed the fleet card too, or not.
Yeah, I, I think that was, when they were gonna use the fleet card.
And that's going by the wayside.
Yeah, that's going by the wayside.
No, this is for when they go up to gas and go, they have, we have charge accounts up there. And they would go up and just put the gas on the charge accounts, but never bring me the receipt for it, so I couldn't like cross-reference any of it. So that's when we started asking them for the receipts, and they were, we were told that at one, some point in time, somebody told them. You don't have to keep the receipts, we don't want them.
I think that was because of the. Fleet card.
This was before us.
I, I think that you need to have that receipt, otherwise you can't cross-check anything, and anybody can play whatever they want on. The gas charge card, and you have no idea what they're doing.
But, yeah, that, and that's where, so this is where, this is why I really do think it's important to have. Not just a meeting with Dan, with everybody, because it, otherwise.
It's the telephone thing, right?
Right, it's the telephone game, I want the first responders themselves to hear it directly from us. The fire, the fight, you know what I mean? Instead of having, because I just, I, like I said, I think communication is a little bit of an issue, and I just, I think it's important that. We all are in the same room and have, have a chance, so.
We're, we're putting the city in a bad position with our auditors.
Yep, we don't do that.
And I think that's.
I, I know, and I, I do think, I think it would be, I think people would understand once we could have the conversation. But I think there's things that have been done, you, we all know this, certainly for years and years, and. Um, people got used to it, and.
New sheriff in town.
Well, right, and, and I think, I really do think most of these pe- people are taxpayers of this community, it would probably be. Appreciative that we're being careful, you know, with their money, so I think that everybody would understand, it's just, uh. A question of why and.
And I, and I, I will say though too, Dan, Dan is very good about communicating, uh, you know, during the meetings, but it's. You know, depends on who's there.
It's a lot, and it's a lot of new people.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I don't know about fire department, but first responders, it's new faces every single month, which is amazing.
Yeah.
But then it's, again, that telephone game of who's telling who, and is it, is it the, is it the old way of doing it, or is it the new way of doing it? And you, like you said, not everybody makes it to every meeting, so it's, like I said, communication is really hard, and the minutes are very. They're fine, they're not, you know, the meetings are recorded and the minutes are, are, are fine, but they don't capture all of this, you know?
I think too, we just, not everybody's doing this purchasing, it's maybe just one or two or three people, I don't think. Cart block, everybody's who went on by and stuff, I think they do have some organization.
Right, but at the same time, I think it, it shouldn't. You should really use your company card, I mean, that's best practice.
And I'm wondering, you know, do we all have to be there or? And Sunny be there and just walk them through it, because Sunny can talk to, this is. You know, what you said about auditors. Walk them through on what the expectations are, you know, from the audit down, you know, what I'm saying. I think Sunny probably would be the better person to be at the meeting to explain, this is what we have to do.
I think she should head it, I think she should definitely head it, but my idea is to also learn from, because not everybody goes to these meetings.
Yeah.
So I, I think it'd be great to learn.
To hear from them.
Yeah, like here's, and like, we, like I got an update, by the way, that the iPads are awesome, and. They're loving them, and they're so happy, you know, and so it'd be good to have, I don't know, I just think once a year, why not? It's, we're, we're with Kane and we see all the other employees, I mean, they're basically city staff, you know, if you really think about it. And I think we should have like a collaborative meeting every so often.
And some of that would have occurred too, at, at our annual meeting too, but the weather and everything didn't allow for Sunny.
Right, yeah.
But it might be a good starting point here, after the first year, they just. Sunny and I sit down with them, or have them come to have a special meeting, or. Half hour meeting before our January nineteenth meeting, or something like that.
I'd just like to see, yeah, I'd like to see us get together and, and, and even make it an annual thing, and maybe even an appreciation thing or something, you know, for our. For our fire department and first responders, some, just, just a thought, anyway, that would be off topic.
I like it though.
I'd have it as a pizza night, whether, and do it that way, and get, get them on the positive.
Yeah.
They're having our Christmas party.
So Sunny, would you mind following up with Dan?
Pick a date?
Pick a date, or just explain to him what we'd like to, um. Have that conversation with council and, um, or leadership or the group whoever wants to handle.
Well, and I think from, cause Dana and I talked, met and talked about this, and I thought one of the things that you were concerned about too is. Kind of the old guard and then new people coming in and kind of that dynamic of.
Succession and just.
Yeah, um, so making sure that.
Good communication, so with that, do we have something to do here? Don't we have to approve these? Or is this an FYI?
Now you got the. And vinyl labels.
Right.
But those are donated, being donated. Or just part of them.
That's a donation after that one, everybody's number.
We're still on number one, fire department one.
Oh, the minute, the minutes were okay, we're on two, approving the two new applicants.
So we're, we're not gonna move, make the bills as, we'll pay as such. Cause there's no other place in their action items that covers these bills.
Right.
And just showing us where they are, yeah.
Oh.
There's invoices here, there's no action item for them.
Right. So.
Three and, three and four, are he's asking for pre-approval on the highlighted ones?
Yes, there's other quotes.
Okay, so he wants us to pre-approve so they can go by it.
Yeah.
That's approved.
And I think on the bills, those were pre-approved.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah. That we need to.
Okay, that.
That makes sense.
Yeah, because I remember we talked about.
We don't have to.
Yeah, I, I would agree with you, I think those are pre-approved, if we can, let's go with that.
That's a three hundred.
Let's go with that.
So, um.
Jim's gotta get going.
I make, I make a motion that we approve. A. Bueller, no, Christopher Bueller, and. Who's the other one?
Erica Schaefer. No, Erica, Erica Schaefer.
Erica Schaefer and Christopher Bueller as new applicants for the, uh, fire department.
They passed.
Responders.
They passed background.
I make a motion we approve Christopher Bueller for firefighter and first responder, and Erica Schaefer as a firefighter.
Can we do the same, the next one in the same room?
I don't know who resigned.
You know, we're approving his resignation.
Yeah.
We're just taking the nominations first. There's a second?
A second.
All in favor, sign if everybody's saying aye.
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 Who the resignation is, I don't know if that's, um, Pat McGovern?
No, Colby Keighley is moving out of the area soon.
Make a motion then.
I can make, I'll make motion to approve Colby Keighley's resignation. From the fire department.
Second. All in favor, say if everybody's saying aye.
Aye.
Those through. Yeah, make a motion, we approve the, uh. Request for E one intake repair of fourteen hundred and fifty four dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor, say if everybody's saying aye.
Aye.
Next one is, um. Gambling funds. For jackets.
For thirty five hundred and fifty three.
Yeah, I think this is, I believe this would come out of the, uh, investment fund.
I think.
You know that one fund?
Yeah.
The four twenty five account, which is the capital investment committee for capital investment for equipment fire. It's the old four M investment fund, the four M is a bad description, because we dropped out of the four M. The four M was a market fund that the city was involved with up until about twenty fifteen or so. Market fund, now it's just strictly a cash investment fund, we call it. Might be a better way of naming that, so.
So Ryland, are you saying for the, for the, what are you, for the fourteen hundred?
No, the thirty five hundred.
Oh.
No, we are free.
It's a free approval.
Yeah, but he's, he's mentioned here using the gambling equipment.
Yes, that's it.
Sitting in an event, we're just sitting in an event.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
That's a four M.
Is that why Sunny was laughing?
Yeah.
Mystery.
Yeah.
There a second there?
I'll second.
Get a more, do a second, all in favor, say probably saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It's approved. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-seven. Say, um, first name plates and the vinyl for collecting for the, um, that seems for their trucks?
I think, I don't, I thought it was on their lock.
Yeah, I would assume a locker.
Okay. And also accepting a donation of a hundred and fifty dollars from Chad Tracy. No reduction to the invoice.
Make a motion, we adopt resolution twenty twenty M dash thirty-seven.
I second.
I think it would be good in the resolution, uh, the resolution, we don't mention the actual six hundred ninety-five dollars and forty cents. The resolution, if I could be updated, reflect that. With that amendment, I think.
And then, can we just, I just, um, and this was a, it's, we're retroactively approving this? And someone just kind of
Well, because the city, the invoice came to the city and it was like what is this? And, um, Kane said it was for the fire department and it's over five hundred dollars, it wasn't preapproved. And on top of that, now we have the donation that I think we need to account for, um, again, audit trail, then the balance is still over the five hundred dollars, so that, that's my rationale for having done it, but I, I agree with you, I can spell out that, um, that the original invoice is instead of at a cost of more than five hundred, in the cost of the eight forty-five forty. And they applied the donation.
All three numbers should order them.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, and that, yeah. This is just another reason that to have the conversation, you know?
So I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-seven.
Second.
We already had them.
Yeah.
And you offered the friendly amendment.
That's right.
Correct, so.
As amended.
Roll call please.
Mayor Ikorst.
Aye.
Nice Mayor Phillips.
Aye.
Councillor Berger.
Hi.
Councillor Richards.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Next item is resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight.
I sneak out a little early tonight.
You may sneak out, yes, Joe, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let us know, um, we're letting you know that Thursday morning.
I will.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, oh, too.
Stay safe out there.
Or as they say, they're grown, small and grown.
Have a great Christmas, take care.
Thank you. Okay, this resolution, um, twenty twenty-two thirty-eight is, you'll remember that this purchase was, uh, preapproved. Um, and now the funds have been received, so this is just acknowledging that the funds came to the city.
So make a motion to approve resolution number twenty two zero two two dash thirty-eight.
Second.
So do you like numbers? Up in the top paragraph is two thousand forty-four dollars and ninety-nine.
Yep.
So this is just accepting the two thousand, we don't really need to
Right.
Balance out that difference.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Call the roll please.
Mayor Ikorst.
Aye.
Nice Mayor Phillips.
Aye.
Councillor Berger.
Hi.
Councillor Richards.
Hi.
Thank you.
Fire partners. November fourteenth minutes, and we have a resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-nine. This was discussed at the Fire Relief Association annual meeting. And they evaluate this every year at the annual review and, and Bevel from Sonny, it explains what they've done over the years is increasing the, um, it's been a while, but now in twenty twenty is twenty-five hundred, so they're asking to increase it to three thousand. And this is, also comes, they work with the state Fire Relief Association, I don't know if that's the exact correct name, but what it is, is they control the, the pension plan. And they monitor them, who's in the pension plan, how many years each of the individuals have and what the payout would be if they retired after twenty years and whatever goes into the formula. The state's saying they can, if they wanted to, they could go up to thirty-six hundred dollars. And currently it's at twenty-five hundred dollars and they voted to increase it to three thousand dollars to one annual payment. And that's what this resolution is about, is just asking the city to approve their action of this proposed change. Uh, they chose the three thousand, it's much lesser than three, thirty-six hundred, if they were to go at thirty-six hundred, maybe not thirty-six hundred, but any higher than the thirty-six hundred, that would put the relief association as well as the city in a bad light if we were to do that. So it's based off of the recommendation of thirty-six, but they've chosen to set it at three thousand. Cause it has been modest increases from twelve hundred to fourteen hundred to twenty-five hundred and now it's thirty-six hundred.
The inflation, I can see where
Anything else I have to think of? I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-nine.
Second.
Comments? Please, um, call the roll.
Mayor Ikorst.
Aye.
Nice Mayor Phillips.
Aye.
Councillor Berger.
Hi.
Councillor Richards.
Aye.
Um, FYI, and the copy of the bylaws brought this to Sonny's attention on page nine of eleven. These high business today's date, December nineteen, twenty twenty-two.
I don't know, cause this is speaking to the, um,
I'm missing something here.
Approved by the members on December thirteenth, is that the date that they approved it and then um, and then we're just above where you'll sign, it's approved by the city council, that's where today's date will go.
Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I am, thank you. Mike's signature on it. Okay. First responders. Actually, three new applicants. Well, we've proved, written already. So James Whiting and Tucker Loy as new first responders. And we approve the resignation already. I make a motion, we approve the, uh, first responder applicant Jane Whiting and Tucker Loy. Second.
About Chris, we already approved Chris.
Yes, and that first we did fires and first responders at the same time.
Your comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Say aye. On the notes, there was a, uh, accepting a donation from Lance Sorensen. Mentions to Sonny that we should it's in the minutes as well, received a check in the mail from Lance for donation, no reference to how much it was.
I believe it was five hundred dollars.
But we should have a reservation for, confirm the amount.
Time, right.
Yeah, for January, so.
Yes.
Hey, um, next item of, uh, nurse operations, Dan Stunt is the new Emergency Operations Center Director, replacing Pat McGovern, who retired. FYI. Finding and zoning. Um, we took care of that resolution earlier. Parts and trails. Down to personnel. Sound system quote.
I owe you all an apology and then I'll turn this over to Renee, but when I sent this, when it was included in the packet in October, I didn't realize that pages one and two were double sided. So you only got pages one and three in October, now you have the whole thing, which shows you how much money you have. No wonder you didn't want to make a decision or wanted more information.
Well, we could have proved it for six hundred dollars, but that was the only dollar to figure in there, we didn't prove that was um, so I brought the question up to Renee, I don't know if it's you know, the amplifier that controls those back speakers, if that was damaged with lightning or if it just quit. Um, I don't know if we, has any type of
They couldn't say for certain, but they thought it was a lightning strike.
We probably have a deductible.
Possibly.
I'm not sure what that is.
Is this American Rescue money?
Well, we use CARES fund to put it in. And this is that same type of, I think it could be used.
Well, it's
Same type of ungraded communicating to our citizens and
Absolutely, especially after Joy's comments tonight.
Yeah, I'm glad you said so. Cause it is bad, I just yeah, my hearing's bad too, but let alone mine too. All right, who else has a problem?
He just said what?
Um, the one thing we need to do, we, we talked about these early resolutions of using the American Rescue Plan. And this is well, another one too, that I think we should definitely run it by Mike. All the other resolutions, we've done that before, we've gotten his preapproval, having, making sure it's legit, and I think it is, of course, but, uh
Of course. You're the mayor. It, it can work that way.
Yeah, that, I'll get you a cup of coffee, so.
Does this mean we got everything back to where it should be?
Uh, yeah, we will be.
You know, and once we get this, so.
I have four mics hanging down here.
I think it is.
Um, the question came up and I don't know if we want to do this or not, but we could, you want to ask Eric if we could take those microphones and put those in the back of the room? Cause if they're gonna take those microphones out.
Yeah.
We paid for it, but I don't know if there's another what's just two microphones, I guess, so, or two microphones. But if we put them in the back room, would that help and what would it take with our equipment to do that, that's possible?
I can ask, the only problem is, is we're gonna end up with that whole echoing back and forth, cause they pick up on sound, so they're gonna try to pick up on, if they're back there.
No.
It's, you're gonna end up with the same thing, whether they're up here or back there.
Or even in the area of the podium, because sometimes it's hard to hear people talking.
Well, I think you'll have two and then they're gonna put two a little bit back farther, so that will pick up the podium.
I just raised a question, but somebody says, I think you, you're probably right, but I do know that the, the dropdown mics will help with the reverberation that we hear once in a while.
That will, but I'm thinking if you move these back there, you're still gonna end up with it.
Yeah.
You know, cause
Unless they can balance them somehow.
Yeah, can they test it?
I doubt it, cause this is what you're gonna get and then it's those are, it's picking up the sound from those speakers back there on these mics and that's where you're getting this whole so I don't, I think you're gonna end up with the same situation if you wanna go back there.
Can we get a credit for these?
Well, a question I have is for these dropdown ones that they want to do here, um, i- is, is the fan noise gonna be increased by virtue of them kind of, I mean, how far do you want them dropped down anyway?
But the fans don't make they don't hear them now.
No.
They're not running now.
When they're on, you don't hear them.
Oh, you know?
Yeah, no, I haven't noticed it.
I haven't, I only noticed this situation back here.
Yeah.
In my ear all night, but I, I'm happy for it, cause otherwise it would be, I can barely feel my fingers up there.
But I do agree with you, when somebody's at the podium and they're projecting toward council, it's
Any people behind them can't hear, we need to do something there.
That almost means I think it's speaker.
Well, could we, can always bring everybody closer, could, well, that's true, we used to be closer.
I, I like that idea, Ryland.
Bring the podium closer.
There's no reason.
Well, but if it's truly, couldn't we just have a basic microphone again?
There used to be one there.
When we had your system.
Yeah.
Could we still though, I mean, why would that, that shouldn't interfere, it's just all it does.
Wireless mic, we got a microphone stand, she's getting people.
You know, and I The last time we tried that, it didn't do anything on these speakers, it only helped this well, but it would help, it should help people.
Yeah, that was something.
Whenever you were talking on it, it wasn't coming through these speakers, but the people on the
People online heard it.
That was all it did. Yeah, was that during the public hearing?
Remember there was something where we couldn't use those?
Well, and wasn't, wasn't it also because Joe was using his computer? That
No.
It was, I don't but it's
But they're gonna be here.
Uh, when they install this, we should double check that microphone, make sure it was working correctly.
See one of the tables in January?
I mean, why, no. No, we need to do it.
Open the microphone, it's still, this is an October seventh quote, so open the quote still.
I did check. Not too long, well, they said if we can get it in in twenty twenty-one, we'd be fine. After twenty twenty-two or twenty, sorry, twenty twenty-three, he wasn't sure if prices would change. Yeah, and I think if, I think definitely using the funds from the American Rescue Plan, I mean, I actually had written that as a note, not knowing if it's available, but
And that include installation.
I think everyone would appreciate that.
I'm sorry, who made that motion?
I'll make the motion.
One second. Motion second, nine dollars, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars in sound and audio. More comments?
Using the American Rescue Plan funds if possible.
All in favor, say probably saying aye?
Aye.
I can do a roll call. No, we have to, no, that's for the other one, I was
Next one, resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-six.
Make a motion to Make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash twenty-two twenty-two dash thirty.
Second.
Annual dedicating. All the roll, please.
Mayor Ikorst.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Phillips.
Hi.
Councilor Berger.
Hi.
Councilor Richards.
Hi.
Administration, we have some alcohol license renewals. Tobacco. Up there in the fleet card and a
There's not going to be a delay then coming in with, um, with Tillys, as long as he's keeping the liquor licenses. Because was there going to be a delay?
No.
Whoever's taking over.
He's had the liquor license the whole time.
Oh, okay, so they're just continuing, okay.
I make a motion, we approve the liquor license renewals for both gas and go and Tillys for twenty-twenty-three.
A second.
Comments? All as a favorite, whoever's saying hi.
Hi.
Hi. Next is the tobacco license for gas and go and cases for twenty-twenty-three tobacco license.
Make a motion to approve tobacco licenses for Casey's and gas and go for twenty-twenty-three.
A second. Comments? Whoever's saying, are they saying hi?
Hi.
Hi.
I think fleet cards have been canceled.
And that has been conveyed to Dan?
Yeah.
Yes.
He never picked his cards up.
Right, but at the meeting, he
It was.
He said that he didn't know why they hadn't been used. So I, or he didn't know why we couldn't, so I just wanted to make sure that all the communication.
He came in on my time, though.
For.
Bunch of receipts affecting the meetings, so. Uh, resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash forty-one. This is a, uh, capital credit refund that people's cooperate sends out to their members at certain levels for the city because of our usage is one thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-nine cents.
Make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two twenty-two dash forty-one.
Second.
Take that money.
The poll, please.
Mayor Ikorst.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Phillips.
Hi.
Councilor Berger. Councilor Richards.
Hi.
New business?
I'm sorry, if I could, um, before we move on from kind of the personnel and administration, I'm a little concerned with this storm coming up. I'm thinking I'm leaving town.
Please do.
I had a, um, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Um, but I'm thinking about Renee coming in on Thursday. That may be impossible. Friday and Monday are
Close, we're close.
So you work from home then on Thursday? Or phone, whatever.
What I can do, yeah.
And can we put a message on the answering system too?
I don't know if I can, oh, but I can answer phones.
Oh, you can?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think we should know by tomorrow if it's, you know what I mean? And I think honestly, I think we should just, if they're saying that travel, like they're saying is going to be impossible. It just keeps getting worse every time. Don't stop it. Just stop looking. I know. I would say we could make that call tomorrow and then she could leave it, you know.
The only thing I, I would question is the whole plowing thing, so not, not saying because of Jan, but let, let's say there's somebody else or something comes up, what do they do now? So do they call City Hall?
The same as the weekend or a night, though.
Yeah.
Nobody's here. I can have my phone on Thursday because I can get the phones routed to my phone that I can at least answer phones if people call in if there's problems. But I know the guys are, are pretty much know they have to come in and do some sort of plumbing.
I think people know that, you know, the twenty-sixth is a day off and Christmas Eve day.
Oh, yeah, that's all posted, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And you've all got my phone number if you so if, you know, if you get a call from a resident or something.
You were.
So we're just going to see how it plays out here.
Well, yeah.
Leave.
Regarding Thursday.
Leave early tomorrow, Sunny.
And is, is that my discretion then for calling it up?
And your idols.
Thank you.
If you want to send something out to us, that's fine. Just FYI.
Just make sure there's a note on the door. I mean, even preemptively tomorrow. You know what I mean? Yeah, I don't think, I mean, it sounds like nobody will be traveling to come to City Hall anyway, but.
I'm so eager to come see you.
They want to get a book to cozy up the sofa with.
Takes care of the Thursday meeting then here, right? Because somebody's going to open the door.
You all have keys.
We can be here for Thursday.
You all have keys. You can get in.
Right, right. No, I was talking about the other people for the meeting that was going to be going.
Oh, well, we'll follow Joe's lead.
Okay, see what goes on.
I'll let you know.
Yeah, I guess, so.
Okay, thank you.
Ordinance.
Oh, and this.
Resolution adopting ordinance twenty-two dash forty-two ordinance number to be determined later.
And that is
This is the payment.
Twenty-two dash oh-two. Apparently you've had one hundred ones, yes.
Wait, what?
The ordinance number is twenty-two-two dash oh-two.
I don't have that.
Oh.
It says I play.
Oh, that's a new one.
It's twenty-two-two dash five.
Oh, two.
It's the one behind it, yeah.
Yeah, there's a resolution that's adopting the ordinance that's behind it.
Okay. Thanks, God, someone's doing it.
Um, it's already one.
Yeah. But it's.
It's two different things. One's a resolution and one's an ordinance. Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-two dash forty-one.
Second.
I really like the idea of this commission and compensating both. Thank you.
And it wasn't the budget, sorry.
And I didn't see, we put in a maximum of eighteen paid meetings. There's extra one. I think in twenty-twenty-three or twenty-twenty-two, we had six meetings, seven meetings.
Because they couldn't get a quorum.
Had three meetings in this.
There were some canceled too. There was only one that wasn't because of the quorum.
But since I've been coming to your meetings and not, this is a reflection on me, but you have, you've had consistent meetings
Right, yeah.
with consistent quorums.
Yeah, exactly, except for one. That was in, I think that was just when you first started because that was in the summer, I think.
Right, there's, there's three meetings up till like January, March, May or something.
But there were a couple that were canceled just because there was nothing on the agenda.
Agenda, right.
So that was like its first part of the year.
I don't think that's going to happen anymore. I mean, like, that's just not going to happen anymore. Our town is busy.
Had stuff cleaned up before, Dave.
Well, no, I'm not saying that for you, but just, you know, we were at a stand. The town was at a standstill because of, you know, waiting on the sewer. Now it's going to be.
There's going to be a lot of stuff going.
Opening are the doors. Okay, so, um, you have a motion? Any other comments? I think it's a good idea. I think it opens, keeps the commission filled. Volunteers.
Amendment.
You want?
Go ahead.
Mayor Ikorst.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Phillips.
Hi.
Councilor Berger.
Hi.
Councilor Richard.
Hi.
And probably you notice there's no double-dipping.
No, but it's.
We're not on that, we're not working that out.
Mark two.
No, try and double dip.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
And we're still missing the November twenty-second minutes.
Yes.
Any other comments?
Washington adjourned.
Second.
Can we vote first? All of the favorites say hi.
Oh, yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
Now, Ms. Berger, go ahead.
Well, no.
Media adjourned at nine oh two.
Okay, so I just wanted to bring this quickly here, this little bit I wrote, because this was my question.
Good meetings.